... Wednesday, September 20th at 7:30 PM. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones is absent, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Approval minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, September 6, 2017, and bills for payment on September 1st and 8th, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. We have two people for repository sales.
Do we have any citizens here today for repository sales? Please step up, give your name and address, and tell us the property you're interested in.
My name's Amy Zlobin. I live at 3712 Lakeview Fairview. I'm looking at the property on Perry Street. It's 2522 Perry. I have the index number if you want it. It's a very small piece of property. It needs a roof. Pretty simple, though. I would like to go on there and fix that up. It looks like it was at one time at a little efficiency. I'd like to go in there and fix it up and either rent it out type of deal. Perry Street down there on 25th Street, you know, it's looking pretty bad. Could use a little fixing up down there, you know? So, that's what I'd like to do for right now. And that's it.
Any member of council want to ask any questions? None. Thank you. What we'll do is, at a later meeting, we'll vote on this, and we'll get back to you. Rose will.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest. Are there any other citizens? Step up.
My name is Diane Isert, and I live at 330 East 13th Street, and I'm interested in buying the lot, the empty lot next door at 328 East 13th Street.
328 East 13th?
Yes, 328, and I live at 330 East 13th. And I don't, do you want to know what we're planning on doing with it?
Yeah, sure, that'd be good.
We just want, our lot isn't, see, I live at 330 East 13th Street, but I don't own the house, but my mother does.
Okay.
And I'm going to inherit it. My mother's 88 years old, so we're interested in buying the lot and putting in a driveway so that we'd have off-street parking. And for the past 15 years, it's been empty, but my fiancee, he cuts the grass faithfully, and it looks real nice, and we always keep our property real nice, and we plan on, you know, he has a big snow blower, and we have two lawn mowers and weed whackers and all kinds of, I'm a gardener, so we'll make sure that it's always beautiful, and we'd really like this property. So, that, you have any questions for me?
Any other? Well, thank you for keeping it clean and neat, and this time will be yours, though.
Yeah, right. And we have to look at it every day, too, you know, so. And they built some new houses in the neighborhood, and we're very happy there.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll get back, as I said, we'll vote this at a later meeting, and we'll tell you the results, so you can be here if you like.
Oh, okay. If we stay, we can find the results out?
Yes, Rose will notify you.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Later on?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a future meeting, probably next week.
Oh, yeah, you said in about two weeks. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see. Are there any other citizens for repositories? Are there any other citizens for repository sales? One last time. Are there any other citizens for repository sales? Hearing none? Rose, we have citizens to be heard, correct?
Nobody signed up, so it's out on the floor.
Okay.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I'm a certified orientation and mobility specialist, and I want to talk about two things. First, I want to talk about Green Garden. I live near Green Garden. I travel Green Garden all the time, and tonight on my way here, I noticed that a woman who I know who lives on 22nd Street was trying to negotiate Green Garden, approaching the railroad tracks with her power wheelchair. I talked to Jason in engineering, to, after talking to Donna Carson in code enforcement, about the significant overgrowing of vegetation on the, on the east side sidewalk. It's really important that that sidewalk be passable, and that we go into the winter with that sidewalk well-maintained, so we have a prayer that at least maybe the snow would be maintained on Green Garden. That's one thing about Green Garden. The second thing is on 21st Street, and I've been communicating with you, President Kwiatowski. Green Garden has a lot of traffic, and nobody seems to realize that the speed limit there is 25 miles per hour. Also, West 21st Street has a lot of traffic, and West 21st Street goes all the way to Pittsburgh Avenue. It's one of the few streets around here that does that, and people don't realize that that's a 25 mile an hour street as well. So, there's a lot of traffic. People who are trying to get across Green Garden at 21st have a heck of a time. There's also even a school bus stop there. I think a four-way stop, if MUC did, if a study and the MUC did regulations would allow it, would be appropriate there because it would slow traffic down, and it would give people who are trying to turn a prayer. It would also give pedestrians a little bit more right-of-way, so I, I hope that that's something that you can take into account. I'm also here about the viaduct. I was checking online, and I happened to notice in the report at PennDOT of the TIP project report for, that the anticipated demolition would be starting on March of 2018. I can, I contacted Thomas Alcorn, the project manager for PennDOT and the Federal Highways liaison, and he told me that, in fact, the contract is supposed to be advertised on November 16th and awarded on 12/21. And after further question, I found out from him that there's going to be a public meeting, he's calling it a public plans display, on October 4th. That's two weeks from today. That has not been advertised yet. John Tushak confirmed for me yesterday that meeting is still going to occur, yet there has been no public advertising. So, you're planning to have, you, the city, the state, federal highways, whoever, is planning to have this meeting in less than two weeks with no advertising, and also Mr. Alcorn said to me that, that the information of the cost of the environmental mitigation may not be available at that time. I think that having a meeting that close to the advertising date of the contract demonstrates that there's no real interest to hear what the public has to say. And this is, this is very concerning, that we have a project which has such a severe impact on the second poorest census tract in the city, and that there is this little regard for the desire of the public to have public information. I also want to respond to something Mr. Witherspoon and others of you have been saying for a long time, saying, "You folks who want to save the viaduct, you come up with the money." The thing is, I have worked around environmental documents, around grants, around cooperative projects for years. We, Erie CPR, of an affiliate of Winds of Change, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we cannot apply for grants and funding in the situation where we have no cooperation from the city, where the city is trying to demolish the asset, where the, where the asset has no place on any plans that it's going to be continued. Our hands would be tied. But 98% of these kinds of cooperative projects around the country are not owned by the nonprofit. They're owned by the jurisdiction, and cooperatively, there is some aid in maintenance and funding, just like what you have at the Leaf Arboretum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Dash, and I live in the 1800 block of West 8th Street. I am here tonight, again, to specifically talk about West 8th Street and my continued efforts to make, to get more traffic enforcement out there on West 8th, and my hopes also to get the street itself improved to make it more safe. In the last three months, I've had two family members involved in serious accidents within two blocks of my house due to reckless driving. I live on the only stretch of West 8th that has parking on both the north and south sides of the street. People rarely park on the street as it's hazardous just to get out of your car. These empty parking lanes essentially double the width of the street, making drivers more comfortable to be aggressive and reckless. People tend to drive exceedingly fast once they head out West 8th Street from the Bayfront Connector, first passing Frontier Park and then Shriners Hospital, to the one-stop light at Lincoln and Harding Elementary. Once through that light, drivers will speed at rates upwards of 50 miles an hour to Pittsburgh Avenue where they enter Mill Creek. This is extremely frustrating and can be terrifying just backing out or pulling into my driveway. We lack curbs on much of the street, which makes it easy to roll up on the sidewalks, endangering pedestrians. Speaking of sidewalks, there's telephone poles in the center of ours, leaving little room for people in wheelchairs or families with strollers. I would like to see our street have curb bumpouts like they have on Lower Parade Street and on West 12th. I would also like to have a planter zone added to the north side of our street, narrowing West 8th Street and possibly adding a protected bike lane, eliminating, hopefully, one of our unused parking lanes. I recognize that this problem isn't isolated to just my little section of West 8th Street, and I know that City Council is considering traffic studies for specific areas on the east side. I don't doubt that you have the best intentions, and our dangerous driving is a county-wide problem that can affect any of us at any time. In closing, I would ask everyone to drive consciously and be aware. Stop at stop signs, not at the last possible second before entering the intersection. Don't roll through yellow lights, because when you do that, the three people behind you do the same thing, and then it's a red light, you know, and everybody rolls through red lights. Nobody's enforcing it. Maybe we don't have enough traffic police. I understand that our traffic police are done working at 3:30 every day. That might be incorrect, but that's the information I've gotten from two different officers. So, that, that's a problem. I would also ask people to stop before crosswalks, not in the crosswalk, because that's why it's there, for people to walk, you know, or people on, you know, people on bikes who have to ride on sidewalks because you can't ride in the street. So, if you would look left and right before you make a turn, because sometimes if you look to where the cars are coming from, but you might not look to where you're turning, and there might be somebody crossing the street there, which has happened to me on 8th and Cockwa, you know, recently, so I almost got hit by a car on my block. So, if we would all recognize that pedestrians have the right of way and that they are walking, so we should be more considerate of them, even if they are walking in the wrong spot, and that happens, but that doesn't negate your responsibility as a driver to be aware and conscious so you don't hurt anybody. So, if we would obey the speed limit, from what I understand, speed limit is the fastest you're supposed to go, so that's pretty much 25. West 8th Street is 25. I know 12th Street is 35, maybe, might be 40. But people start at 25, and then they go up, and it's, it's really dangerous. You, it's harder to stop, you know, if somebody does dart out in the street, you know, somebody on a bike or a child chasing a ball, especially down here on the lower east side, 3rd Street, I see people flying all the time, 50 miles an hour over East 3rd. And, and I would also ask everybody to put your phone down, because it's real easy when you're at the stoplight to look at your phone, and then you set it down, and then you look at it, and you set it down. I see people doing it all the time. So, if we all try to lead by example, and leave a little early, and remember that no matter where you're going, it's not more important than somebody's life. So, that's all I have to say tonight. I do have a little list. There's just four accidents in the last week that definitely could have been avoided. And then this is a nice picture of 12th and Green Garden today at 2:00.
Is your name and number on there?
Um, my name and number's up there. Yeah.
Okay. If you can, give me a call tomorrow, or at your nearest convenience, and I'll hook you up with the liaison that's appropriate for it.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just to remind everybody, we did apply for a multimodal PennDOT grant for our West 8th Street corridor, and we're waiting to hear from that, and it would address the very corridor that she's speaking about, multimodal and being pedestrian, bike path, and the street. So, we're just awaiting PennDOT's approval or rejection of our grant application.
In the meantime, while we can see, maybe we can get the police to have a little presence there once in a while.
Right. I spoke with Lieutenant Durkin several times. They probably know my name and number down there, because I call a lot. It's really dangerous. I can't cross my own street without risking my life, and people will pass on the right, upwards of, you know, 30, 40 miles an hour, they'll pass in the parking lane. But I have spoken to City Council before, and I have, I was at the transportation meeting. I went down to the mayor's roundtable for ADA to talk about maybe why wheelchairs have to go out into West 8th Street. You know, just sometimes the snow is up on the sidewalk, and it, it's just too much, it's too, too wide of a street.
Thank you for your concern.
Hopefully, PenDOT will approve that for us.
Okay. Thank you for your concern.
Thank you. I'm very concerned, because I live there, and it's really dangerous, and just like the rest of the city, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? That's you, Mr. McDonald.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm McDonald, property 19th and Reed. You know, the other night, I forget where I was, but anyway, there was a guy out there in a wheelchair, one of those power wheelchairs. No lights on it, and I'd like to hit him. Out in the street, no, you, you got to do something about them wheelchairs. I'm, it's a wonder somebody haven't got killed. I see them out there at night. They don't have no lights on them. That's dangerous. You hit, hitting one of them, it's your fault, but they don't have no business out. They shouldn't even be out at night. They shouldn't be out at night. I remember one time I was out on 3rd Street, and it wasn't at night, it was in the daytime, and this individual had one of those power wheelchairs. He was stuck in the snow. We went over and pushed him out, and he was stuck, too. He could have never got out of there by himself. Y'all better kind of think about that, what I'm telling you, because it's dangerous out there. Those wheelchairs are dangerous out there at night. It's a danger to them, it's a danger to the traffic flow out there. That's, that's, that's a bad scene. That's a bad scene. I'd hate to see one get hit, but I, like I said, I don't see why there haven't been an accident. They don't have no lights on them, no lights nowhere. They should at least have lights on them. No lights. God, God really watching over them, because I can't see how come we haven't had no accidents with them. Well, that's enough on that one. I don't want to get political, but I'm not. That Walmart out there, there were hundreds of jobs, hundreds of people that went through that Walmart, you know, worked and lose their job, worked. And Ruby was instrumental in that Walmart coming out there. She really was. And y'all gave her some kind of accommodation down here, because she was responsible for it coming out there. You remember that, Mr. President?
Yes.
What I can't understand is, all them jobs that the other man supposedly brought out there, not out there, but brought to the city, I haven't heard anything about those And I'm concerned, because we need truth. We need the truth up there in the fifth floor. We don't need no liar up there. We want somebody that want to take the city forward. I've listened to a lot of people talking about, "We are taking the city forward." The city haven't gone nowhere. In other words, it's, look like to me, it's going, it's backing up. That ain't good. We want to go forward. We want to make things good for our kids, because our kids are our future. I know some of them, you look at, you, you can't see much of a future there, but they're still our future. I get a little depressed sometime, you know, you see them out there doing things that they shouldn't be doing, and they'll curse you out in a minute. It ain't none of your business. We have to make it our business, because kids are kids. They're going to do, you find grownups out there doing kid things. So, you know the kids are going to get into things that they shouldn't be into? We, we have to make things better for our kids. We need, you know, we need some, when I, I remember when I was a kid, we had foot patrolmen. You know, the presence of the police around, it, it deter a lot of crime, you know? Just, just seeing them around. You look up, you see a police coming. Now, I look for them to have cars with jet engines in them, the way they be flying around town. They, it don't make sense. They don't have to be going that fast. I remember one hit a lady over here on the viaduct on 15th Street there. I don't know what was done about that. You didn't hear no, I, I don't know. I know we need police, but we need somebody to kind of, I don't know, they act like they're not responsible for nothing. You know that, all that flying around town is not necessary. You look up, a police coming, the lights blaring, if he hit somebody, well, the officer was doing his job. When you kill somebody, that ain't none of your job.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. It's a thinner crowd tonight. I came here to talk about something that you're not going to be surprised to hear. It's the viaduct. I specifically wanted to comment on homeownership and the idea that if you do own a house, you're going to make sure that the gutters are cleaned, otherwise you're going to have a problem with your roof. And the problems that we're having with the viaduct stem basically from the fact that we didn't take care of our gutters. And so, I'm inviting you to come and see for yourself. Another little analogy, if you're about to buy a vehicle, I'll bet you test-drive it. So, before you create a new path for the citizens of Erie, meaning that you eliminate the viaduct, before you do that, take a test-drive on the viaduct itself, and then walk around with us on Route 290 on that intersection, and cross over with us on East 12th Street, where there's 60,000 cars a day, and you can see the difference in the two paths for our children. I want to thank those of you, especially Councilwoman Sonia Arrington, who've been at the bridge, but I'm inviting you, if you haven't had a chance, to join us on another walk, and I'll pass this up, too, so that it can be distributed. But I also want to say, if you're not really interested in coming when there's going to be a crowd, and there will be a crowd, I know that members of Erie CPR, especially our architect, Adam Trot, or Freda Tepfer, who spoke from earlier, would be happy to accompany you and point out some of the things that I've raised. But again, I thank you for your time tonight, and I really ask you to think about, again, that analogy of driving a car. There's no way you're going to buy it without test-driving it. Please don't eliminate the viaduct without test-driving the alternative that you're going to be providing to our citizens. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tricia.
Are there others, any other citizens to be heard?
You're doing a good job.
Step up to the mic.
I'm Kyle. I am a student at Penn State Barren, which is in 471 College Drive. I know it's not technically Erie, but my, my question's fairly simple. I know you don't see too many people of my age here, or really engage in the community at all, and my question was, how can I and how can other college-age students and high school students get involved in community governance and community actions? Because the five or six colleges around the Erie area, there's a lot of people our age that are kind of separated and not engaged in what goes on, and that's all.
So, you're, you're here to learn how government works, right?
Yeah, basically, on a local level, yeah.
We appreciate, and we think, I, I speak for, I think the majority of us, that we get a little disappointed with the turnout of the youth and just their approach to government lately, that for our generation, we fought so hard to get the right to vote at 18, and, you know, to not take that seriously. I'm glad you're here, and you're welcome anytime. Feel free. Thank you. Mr. Mersky.
If he would leave his, either the address or a way to contact him, he has to question, but obviously, we don't answer at this time, but if he could leave that with the clerk.
Oh, you like, leave his address?
Or his email.
Okay. Can you do that with the?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, your contact information, leave with the?
Oh, yeah. Right.
With our secretary. You'd like to speak, sir? Come on up.
I'm residing at the Western Motel, 10th and Saster, 1st Room 125. I just got back from California. My wife can't take winters up here. It's very depressing. She's out in California. Anyway, I just wanted to say, I think you're doing a great job, and I think the police are doing the best they can with what we got and with these crazy drivers out there. I spend most of my time on foot or in a bus or a taxi. You don't got to worry about me too much. Doing a great job, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? One last time. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Rose, you want to proceed?
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 15602, Official Ordinance Number 262017, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $75,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof in the Capital Improvement Fund for use of purchasing DDC HVAC control system for the municipal building. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15602, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 262017, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number 262017, finally by a six, nay zero. Council Files 15603, Ordinance Number 272017, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $157,545.52 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received and providing for the expenditure thereof for the Bureau of Refuge and Recycling. By Mrs. Arrington, and seconded by Mr. Mersky, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15603, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 272017, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number 272017, finally by a six, nay zero. That'll take us into new business.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
We have a second. Are there any separations? Are there any separations?
No separations. Moving the balance of the agenda. Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. Mr. President, we do have a waive rules tonight.
Okay.
This is for the September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Just the bottom and then?
Okay.
Do we need to waive the rules first?
Oh, yeah, we gotta waive the rules. I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Okay, waiving the rules. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. Sponsored by Mr. Mursky and seconded by Mr. Potowski, resolve that the Erie City Council recognizes September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
So, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mursky, go ahead.
I just wanted to put this on the agenda to recognize those families that are, have struggled and still those that have childhood cancer and the survivors of childhood cancer. It is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I was approached by a family to put this on the agenda. And I think it's important that we recognize that cancer affects many families in this community. And especially when you have childhood cancer, it's a, it's a struggle for the whole family, going back and forth to the hospital and getting the treatments. And so we just wanted to recognize officially that it's Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and just recognize those families and let the city know that we are thinking of those people.
Thank you, Mr. Mursky.
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski.
For the members of the young people out there, what just happened was we had an item that did not make the agenda for the meeting. It was a last-minute addition, so council can waive the rules and add it to it, which we did tonight. And we do it out in the open and so everybody can see it. Would you like to introduce your group real quick? Well, thank you for coming. And was that taking committee reports or?
Committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, Bob?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. Today, we did vote on the HVAC control system, which will bring energy efficiency to City Hall and hopefully even out the heat between the floors. That's the goal of this purchase. And it's to eliminate waste with the taxpayers. And I wanted to speak briefly on the new business, the traffic study. I wanted to thank you, Mr. President, for the traffic study between 33rd and 34th at that Ash and Pine intersection. I've seen a lot of accidents there throughout the years. And, you know, working with PennDOT, I'm hopeful that Mrs. Parmenter will come back with a solution to that. It is a dangerous intersection at certain times of the day. Certain times you can get through with no problem, other times, you know, it's like the old Frogger game where you're hopping across. So, thank you for that. And I did want to address the, I did briefly mention it. We do have a multimodal grant in for that West A Street corridor to address the very things that that lady was talking about. Last time she came here, we did take what she said to heart and we took it to the administration and they did put in a grant for that. And that's that grant that also matches what Mill Creek's doing on West A Street as well. So if we're able to get that, we'll be able to pull that all the way through, not just into the city, but through Mill Creek on West Eighth, all the way to Peninsula Drive, which would be fantastic. So, we are, it's good when people bring stuff to our attention because then we're able to address it. And a lot of times it's a funding issue, so we're grateful for the state and hopefully we can get those funds. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mursky. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the Erie Downtown Partnership Board meeting today. There wasn't a lot of new news, but I did want to report that the care crew meetings continue. Each of the downtown districts has a care crew and there's been a lot, a lot more activity going on. Each of the care crews have meetings where they get together and talk about ideas, ways of cleaning up their areas, just ideas to improve the neighborhood. I know on August 22nd, the Grismo Plaza, there was a cleanup there, so that definitely helps, helps the city. Now, that was done in preparation for an upcoming block party that they had there. Also, the work continues on the facade grants. There was a facade, I guess, study session that they had for, for the grants and also continue to fund security cameras and a lot of other plans are moving forward. I also attended the Blight hearing. Senator Laufman had a Blight hearing. It was this past Wednesday. There was many comments and questions about Blight and there was a lot of questions about just what the government can do, the state government can do to help, help our area and help organizations in the, in the city. But I was disappointed that discussion wasn't more in-depth on the subject. Yeah, I was expecting some more deep discussion on it and it didn't really occur. But hopefully that'll happen soon. I did note at the meeting that, you know, I'd like to see more resources to fund demolition. I know the city's applying for those and we're looking for more, more funding for that. So hopefully that'll continue because we have a lot of need for that. And also I did note, you know, it would also help if we had more research, not just funding, but more assistance from our entrepreneurs. There's a lot of entrepreneurs in our region. That's, that number's growing. But really, there's, the goal is really to create jobs and, you know, really small businesses is a key to that. Lastly, I just wanted to mention for upcoming event that we have a study session coming up on October 12th at 5:30 in Council Chambers. It's gonna be on code enforcement. This meeting was requested by council. And I did want to remind you that at the meeting, there will not be public input taken. But if anyone had any questions that they wanted to contribute to the meeting, please email myself or any of the member of, a member of council. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to say that at our next meeting, I will be placing on the agenda the naming of West Third between Cherry and Poplar, Ron Baby Steel Way. Ron Steel lived on Third as a child. His mother still resides there. He bought a house there. Ron worked for the county for many years, then became the executive director of GCAC. And he passed not quite a year ago. He did a lot on the west side. They know him quite well. And I will be presenting that at our next meeting. Also, I met with Mr. Willie C. McAdory. Now, Mr. McAdory hasn't been here for a while. Unfortunately, he's quite ill. And so I told him that I would let the council know that he misses us and we miss him. But also I told Willie C., I said, "We hear you." I said, "We know you are very loud, so we let that loudness go in one ear and out the other, but we maintain the contents of what you're saying." And some things we cannot change immediately and some things is out of our realm, but we do hear you. So, Mr. McAdory, if you are watching tonight, take care of yourself. And Erie Housing Authority is doing quite well under the direction of Mr. Mike Fraley. They're continuing to give kids scholarships through their golf tournament, very successful. And I continue to congratulate Ms. Fraley for an outstanding job as the CEO. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Mr. President. No committee reports this evening. Do have two upcoming meetings here within the next week or two. And we will do an update with both the Port Authority and EMTA. I don't know how many people are driving by East 14th, but there is a lot, a lot of construction going on over there. I don't know right now what the complete goal is, if they're trying to have it covered so they can proceed with the winter work. But we'll give you an update on that expansion project. I want to thank Dave Malvehill here from Public Works. We had a little safety issue at Frontier Park this past week. And it was a fluke-type thing, but it was an issue that needed to be addressed. And it was taken care of promptly without getting into detail. But it was a safety issue that I appreciate you working on, David, and getting it handled so there isn't further issues down the road. Want to thank that, I want to thank all the citizens who come up and voice their concerns and opinions. And things, some things are in our control, some things are not so much in our control. But tonight, we had a special individual that came up and thanked council for what we do and what the people of the city do, whether it be the police, the fire. But I just want to not only thank all the citizens that do come up. And, I mean, the only thing we can do is try to help you if we know of some of the issues. But it's nice to hear once in a while that we're trying our end too, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. Mrs. Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too attended last Wednesday's Blight meeting. And I agree with, with Dave. They didn't talk very much about Blight. They talked about all the programs, different programs that we have available here in the city to our citizens, but nobody knows about them. And that's the issue I raised down there. We need to be more transparent, you know? And this goes into what Ms. Freda was talking about. When there's public meetings, nobody knows about them. We have to do a better job of getting the word out to our citizens, you know? Because we, when we talk about Blight, you have senior citizens who are on fixed income. You know, we have one of the highest rate of poverty. People can't afford to fix up their houses. But we have all these programs, if they're eligible for, that can help them, and nobody knows about it. To me, the best awareness campaign is going and knocking on the doors, letting the people know. Then we also need to utilize our community centers for forums, for meetings, because a lot of our people will come out to the community centers and listen to what's going on. But I guarantee you, if they knew about a meeting of a program that could help them fix their houses up, they would be there. So, we need to do an awareness campaign. We need to be better about making sure our citizens knows what we have to offer down here at, at City Hall. I think we should have a brochure for, for every program that we have. And when the zoning officers are out knocking on doors, giving citations, give that brochure to the citizen and say, "Okay, I'm giving you a citation for this problem, but here is a list of programs that we have that you may be able to get help to fix the problem." So we really have to be more conscious of what we doing and try to help our citizens as much as we can. And another meeting yesterday that I had the pleasure of attending was the Community Benefit Agreement meeting. I talked to council about it in our caucus meeting. And this is something that we're all very interested in. We would like to know a little more about it. So hopefully, you can take back to Mr. Horton. Now, maybe we can do a study session and sit down with you all, because this will benefit our community. You know, we all fighting over the CDBG money, this little pot of money, when there's other ways out there that we can get money to help with things that need to be done in our community. So you have city council's ear, so the ball is in your court. So have Mr. Horton get in contact with me. I'll set up a study session, because you have all of our attention. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Just a quick follow-up, keep my report simple. To the young people out there, the study sessions you hear about, that's in addition to these council meetings. A lot of people think council meets twice a month and that's it. But I can guarantee you, it is not a 24-meeting-a-year job. We are out in the community, as you heard today. And so the study sessions are our response when we get citizens' complaints and we want to meet as a group and have a discussion with certain departments or certain programs. So where we can get concerted up there, properly advertised, and we can sit down and talk in a, in a, in a manner with them where it's open, but yet we have their attention. Getting back to the traffic studies, I got a few calls from Freda for one. What triggers traffic studies is citizen complaints. And I had a number of them over the years on those specific intersections, plus I drive them. And I have personal experience. That's not to say that we're not concerned about the west side. We are. So Fred, I will call you about that. That's why I texted you. And we will, you know, when we think there's a problem, I think it's prudent that we do study it. A lot of things have changed over the years and so have our traffic flows. And people have taken, I should say liberties with the speed limits and how they interpret roads that go from two lanes to one lane, back up to two lanes, or they use a two-lane road for a one-lane road. So I, I think we got to start, Mr. Malvehill, take notice, I think we have to start marking our roads a little better. I know some around town, sometimes there's a need for that and it would cause less confusion. And just summing up, before the end of the year, I will be contacting the administration and the solicitor's office to see what the progress is on some of the things that council has done for the year that I think, you know, the citizens are asking me when we're gonna get it unrolled. So I just want to see what the progress is and see if we can get these things going before my year is up. But also get some, some, the ball rolling so that we can get these programs instituted quickly. And I noticed today that while I like progress, I'm getting a lot of complaints about the blocking of roads. And I talked to Mr. Pettit about East 38th Street, about how you can wake up in the morning and all of a sudden, one part of the road's blocked and then at the other. They're not being advertised properly. And I think I would like to encourage our engineering department, Mr. Malvehill, to work with the contractors to kind of advertise these closings a little bit more. I mean, tonight I drove into work and 7th Street, which is sometimes closed, is open, but 6th Street is closed. And I think, I want to see what's done in other towns, which is when you have a major road closed five blocks ahead and there's one-way streets involved, let's put a sign on Parade Street or the nearest large street that funnels traffic down there. Let's warn them that the street is closed by putting a sign like 7th Street is closed ahead. So you don't get down there and then you find out you gotta go in the opposite direction of what you want to do. Like tonight I came down here, I, I had a choice. I could go right, which I really didn't want to do, so I had to go left. And luckily 7th Street was open. But if we can have more coordination, and I did talk to Mr. Pettit about PennDOT about this, that, you know, these builders have to be careful, like they park trucks right on top of an intersection. You're trying to get out and you can't see around them. So we need to be a little bit more prudent. So I do it constructively, but, you know, try to see if you can do something with that. Thank you. Mrs. Controller?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I provided council a letter with an attachment that shows the 2018 MMO for the pension funds. The letter, along with that attached document, shows the calculations using the new 2017 actuarial evaluation report. So if anybody has any questions, you can contact me and I can, you know, give you any further explanation if you need any. And if you have to, if you want to review the actuary reports, I'll have copies in my office if anyone's interested in those. In regards to the pension funds, I did check them today to see where they are. And currently, they have a value of approximately $247.9 million for the, the three pension funds and the water reserve values at $11.7 million. So they're growing because the market obviously is, is progressing in the, in a good way. The third quarter, the pension funds, I'll present a report in, sometime in November, after we have our won't, after we have our aggregate board meeting, so.
And, uh, thank your staff, I know they do, uh, that report is not easy. It's a lot of work, and thank them, and thank the, uh, pension committees for their hard work. We appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Mulvahill?
I don't have a report tonight.
No report?
Not tonight.
Would you like to inter, I, uh, I don't think we're familiar with the new solicitor. Would you like to introduce himself, or?
Uh, yeah, I'm Attorney Nate Stross, sir. I'm a part-time, uh, city solicitor.
You'll be with us now, or?
Uh, yeah, I have been for a year now.
(laughing) Uh, you know-